Order, a regular meeting of the Planning Commission. Fellas, do you have a roll call?
Yes, Chairperson Bob McCool.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Lisa Ritchie.
Here.
Lieutenant Solis Sartain here, David Harper. Jerry Malia. Ben Miller. Jason Reese.
Here.
Anthony Stewart.
Here.
Steve Whitty.
Here.
Planner Stephen Williams.
Here.
Attorney Dan Hardy.
Here.
Alright, thank you. Now we have time for a public comment on any consent agenda or non-agenda items. If anybody has anything to say, now's the time. Doesn't look like we have anyone. Now we have minutes from February 5th. Anybody who want to make a motion to approve minutes?
Let's go do approve the minutes.
And we have a second.
And who is this sitting at my expense?
Uh, sorry, Dave, David. All in favor?
Opposed?
Abstained.
Abstained, and Anthony's abstained. Alright, so now, let's see. Going to open a public hearing for... To review and comment on a request for subdivision plots. And a final development plan for Lot 1, Block 14 in Lot 1, Block 15 in Superior Town Center, and comment on vested property rights requests. Fellas, do we have proof of publication?
I, it's been so long since we've had one, I forgot to bring it in with me, but I do have it and I will submit it as evidence.
Okay, so I'll open the public hearing. And Sarah, staff presentation, do we have a 3D tonight?
We do, we got both, or three actually. So Stephen Williams, town staff. Tonight's development application involves two subdivision plots, one for Block 14 and one for Block 15. And a final development plan to develop 26 units on Block 14 and 28 units on Block 15. The images shown here on top are for the two-story product that Thrive is proposing on Block 14. And the images on the bottom are of the three-story product that they're proposing for Block 15. Fifty-four units in total are proposed. And Chase Mullin, our 3D imaging consultant, is here to clarify how this project will fit within the 3D model for downtown Superior that he's created. Jay Garcia and his development team, representing Thrive Homes, are also here and they have a presentation of their own. Oh, is this not gonna... okay. The subject property is located in Planning Area 3 of downtown Superior. The area in yellow reflects the residential areas that are... The residential zoning, and it affects most of Blocks 14 and 15. There are, you can't really see it here, but there are two little slivers of flex zoning that affect both segments of the blocks that are on Promenade. However, only residential products are proposed. So these are the two, like, kind of zoomed-in versions of the subdivision plots. Block 14 is on the left and Block 15 is on the right. It would plot the parcels primarily on the outside of the block facing the street. For each block, there is a section of homes that are more interior. Those are also oriented to face the street, as we'll see with the final development plan details. And then there's two primary outlots associated with each... There's eight outlots in total, but two primary ones associated with each application in the area in gray are the drivelanes that they're proposing. Those will be privately owned, but publicly accessible. And then the two primary outlaw areas are concentrated to face Promenade. So Block 14 Promenade is to the north and for Block 15 Promenade is to the south. The final development portion of this application clarifies the development improvements and standards that Thrive is proposing for each block, as well as where they may vary from those standards. The cover sheet includes both parking and then site data tables that clarify the standards. The parking table notes that two-car garages are proposed for all of Block 14. And for most of Block 15, there are two exceptions on Block 15, which we'll see a little bit later, that have one-and-a-half-car garages, and those units will be limited to two bedrooms. The site data table also clarifies the land distribution and the proposed setbacks and building heights. A two-to-eight-foot setback requirement applies for most of the surrounding streets, but a zero-to-15-foot setback exists along Promenade. Thrive has two setback exception requests, which are highlighted in this table, but we'll get to when they get to the site development plans. Block 14 is subject to a 32-foot height limit and Block 15 is subject to a 55-foot height limit. The two-story product that Thrive's proposing for Block 14 is at that 32-foot height, while the three-story product is closer to 42 feet in height, so a good 13 feet under the 55-foot height limit. So this is the context site plan. It's a little faded, but you can kind of see the blocks that are adjacent that have been approved for development already. Block 13 is the one that's built. Block 25, Remington, got approval for earlier this year. And then Thrive also earlier this year has approval for the northern segment of Block 26, so that's the surrounding context. The other thing, I guess, to note here is that the same product that Thrive got approval for for Block 26 is what they're proposing on Block 14 to the immediate northwest. And then all the arrows show the points of access for each of the blocks. So the other thing to understand about this application is that we have one-way streets affecting most of the streets around it, with the exception of Discovery and Superior Drive, those are both two-way. But Promenade goes south this direction, north this direction, and then Village Greenway comes to the southwest, while Central Parkway runs to the northeast. So all of the circulation and vehicle access and emergency access has been evaluated according to those one-way streets. So this is the FDP plan for, or the site plan for Block 14. We do include all the required plan sheets with this, but we're just going to get into the site plans and a little bit of the landscape plans and architectural details through this presentation. So the site design for Block 14 again is shown here. Most of Thrive's units are oriented to face those surrounding streets, as we mentioned. There is, there are these three units here that are still oriented to face Promenade, but they are at a distance closer to 100 feet from the right-of-way. They face the outlaw that kind of comes in between. And so a lot of attention's been paid to kind of orient toward the park and obviously to orient all the surrounding streets. But in order for these units to be allowed in the middle, they needed a setback exception from the, because everything in the PD is a distance from the right-of-way. So we requested them to request an exception or directed them to request an exception for these instances. And then the other setback exception occurs along Village Greenway on both blocks, and there's a two-to-eight-foot setback range that was approved for the PD. And then there is also an eight-foot utility easement that later got put through here to run a very large, powerful electric line. And so in order to avoid that easement, they have to set their units back a few feet further from that utility easement. So those are their two variance requests to the setback standards within the PD. And they apply again for Block 15. So Block 15, the only real difference are they're organized or kind of the site design is very similar, where there's an access point off of Village Greenway, and there's an access point off of Central Parkway, and then two to the north off of Superior Drive. It's kind of an H-shaped access. And then this outlaw doesn't allow the access to go all the way through. It allows pedestrian circulation and is kind of seen as an extension of Village Green Park, which exists, in this case, to the south. But the only real difference in this design versus the design for Block 14 is obviously the product, which we'll get into, but there's four units internally and four units on the, on Superior Drive, where you'd see, oops, you'd see three units internal to Block 14, and that's because of the footprint of these... This block's actually bigger, but the footprint of these structures for their two-story product is larger than the footprint for the three-story product. And Jay will probably get into the detail as to how they've organized the internal floor plans through their presentation. But you'll be pretty familiar with the design for Block 14, because it's identical to what you saw for Block 26. So 32 feet in height, we had them go through the same exercise in order to clarify that they'll be meeting those things in terms of how we measure height and how we measure grade. So they've shown that for these lots, which this is an example of a triplex that'll exist on lots 24 through 26. And then their color elevations, they provided as well. I guess getting into the side elevations, they do have enhanced side elevations where they have units that'll actually face corners or prominent public open spaces like this outlaw. So the unit four here would have an enhanced side elevation, and so would the one on the corner. And so that's what they're showing through the side elevation, is that they have more enhancements on those more prominent, and then the ones that are only separated from another unit, less side enhancements. And then this is a fourplex with one of their color schemes kind of shown. So the, there's, you know, Body 1, white, off-white color that is used for the board and batten, and then there's a different contrasting color that'll be used for the horizontal lap siding. Same shed roofs and kind of mix of shed and gable roof lines, and then the four-color scheme shown here. And then one of the requirements that you guys added as a condition was to lighten up the rear facades, and that was through their application for Block 25. So they've done that here by using that Body 1 color, you know, on the internal units as well as the garage doors. So there isn't as dark and imposing of a feeling. And then this is the enhanced side elevation for their four units. So you can kind of see that the four-unit roofline changes here. So because of that change in roofline, there's also a change in the side elevation versus what you saw with the triplex. So they have two more enhanced side elevations for each of their fourplexes, and those are the ones that front Promenade. So the real difference or the real new, I guess, element that you guys haven't seen yet is what they're proposing for Block 15, and that's shown here. So for the two-story product, it's a 1,350 square foot home. And for this product, it actually ranges from 1,300 feet to 1,740. And it's a townhome product versus the urban villa product that's proposed for the other block. It's also 42 feet in height, and the architectural difference, there are architectural differences. So the gable roofline really is what kind of defines this product. It's a, it's consistent through all of their front elevations, and it helps define the two patios that they've actually proposed on the second and first floors. Doors are defined a little bit easier when we see the color elevations, but there's a shed roof and bricks around, around each front entrance as well. And then they do have three different elevations for their triplex. And they're all what we'd consider kind of enhanced side elevations, where they have plane variation as well as material and color variation. So the plane variation occurs in this bump out here. It's a two-story feature on this side. It would actually be on one front end and then on the back end, so in two different locations. And then the real enhancement occurs on Block 15 on each of the corners, where they have a wrap deck, so that they actually address both streets with some, you know, livable outdoor space. And then this is what their product looks like in color, and we requested that they provide a different color palette for this product as well, which they have. And they do consistently use that white, so there is some kind of bridge for the two products as well in terms of materials. But they do have a different body color, too. They have a new body color, three, which you don't see, you only see two body colors on the other product, but because of the massing, it's different and greater for the three-story product, they've introduced a third body color as well. And those are the side elevations. And then the landscaping scheme for Block 14 is shown here. Much of the emphasis is, you know, focused on those outlots. But there's also landscaping between units, and then landscaping that buffers the internal drivelanes from the interior units and surrounds their parking spaces, the off-street parking spaces that are proposed. That's the same thing for Block 15. The only real difference in this design is that they have kind of an arched sidewalk and connection, where as you see, sorry, you see a more perpendicular or parallel, I guess, connection to Promenade here. So very consistent in site design and very consistent in, you know, kind of where they're placing their landscaping focus and attention to the park that these two blocks face. So this is a street perspective, and it's looking down Central Parkway. So you can see the three-story product in the distance, but this is, you know, primarily to give you an indication of what the two-story product will look like right along Central Parkway, where it's close to five feet, five-foot setbacks from the right-of-way. And then looking back down the same street, that's what their three-story product will look like looking to the southwest. So you guys got the staff recommendation. It's fairly standard in terms of there's a handful of technical corrections that staff identified through their memo, and then, you know, more process-oriented condition about the plots needing to be recorded prior to the final development plan. But we'll work with Thrive to ensure that the technical corrections get kind of buttoned up before their town board meeting in August. So that concludes my presentation. I can run the 3D video, or we can turn it over to Chase, and he can fly you through manually, however you guys want to do it, and then we'll turn it over to Thrive for their presentation.
Okay. You can have a, yeah, go ahead and fly us. Good evening, Chase Mullin with MIG. If you could just orient us where you're starting for people who are watching. And for us. Okay, over here to the west, the flatirons. So in front of us here is Block 14, and then this is Block 15. Maybe we'll just do a kind of a quick loop here through it. Kind of come down here, Village Green, now we're kind of going to be heading south. Park. And then this is Block 14 again. Oops, into the trees a little bit. That's that outlaw there. This is the end of Discovery Parkway. And then this is Central Parkway. Block 15. Any particular angles? Commissioners request?
Yeah, would you please go into, like, the open area, like, into the park, basically, and then look in both directions?
Stephen did ask me to confirm how the spice pipe plan relates to this, and the nearest place it is is about 31 and a half feet below that height limit. So here's kind of the middle of the park. This is looking north. There's that outlaw. And then looking south. And could you, could you go up to the homes on the, to the south that are bordering? Just, I just want to look down, you know, just from along that ridge and just kind of get the view from there. So past this row, so we're going to be looking back at these guys right here, and I don't think we can quite see the... From that angle now. So then just head... So heading east? East, yeah. Bumping into some houses. Again, right here is 14, and then that's 15. That's good for me. Thank you. Anyone else? Anything else anybody wants to say, David?
Yes, however. When the development is complete, there will be a lot more houses between 15 and the view that you were just taking.
Yeah. There will be, I mean, this edge here.
There are Blocks 17, 18, 19, 20, 16, and others, which will fill in those open areas. I mean, maybe I could ask Stephen, what's the height limit on Block 17, 18, 19, and 20?
So the, this is the last, I can't, I guess I can't put, sorry, but where he's pointing is the, no, no, the Block 15.
Right.
That's 55 feet, and then kind of south of there, there's a 55-foot allowance that'll be on the northeast side of what it's shown as Avenue C, but it's Promenade.
Yep.
And then on the south side of Promenade, that'll all be 32 feet.
It's always 32.
And then it actually flares out a little bit down here, where there's still going to be 32 feet, it just jogs up. So we can show the PD and you can see the line better, but there is a mix in it, but the 55-foot allowance is closer to US 36, and then the 32-foot allowance is closer to Rock Creek.
Just curious, not really related to this, but we haven't talked for a while, or maybe I'm out of the loop, but what's the latest on BVSD's parcel?
They haven't, they, they don't, they don't want it, so the, or they don't, they haven't said that they'll need it or this will trigger it. So once, my understanding is once, you know, Toll develops, then that parcel will go away, and there's some stuff in the agreement about how that works with the developer and the town, so.
Anything else for the 3D? No? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That's awesome, as usual. Just love it.
It's new to see it fill in and...
Now that there's kind of, it's starting to be incredible now.
Yeah.
He can still do 3D even though he's sleep deprived, so.
Great. Alright, do we have a presentation from the development? Here, I'll hand this off, sorry. And actually, I should check, do we have any other questions for Stephen yet, or no? Good?
Hey, good evening, everyone. I think I've met most of you already before.
If you could introduce yourself, too, just for the record.
Yeah, absolutely. So Jay Garcia, Thrive Home Builders. I'm a project manager for Thrive Home Builders for this project. Been working very hard on it, so we're excited about being in front of you all this evening. I will try and be brief and make sure I know that you guys kind of know who we are, but, you know, just to review, it's important for me to reiterate just how special we think the town of Superior is. Nope, didn't fully animate that slide, but that's okay. Basically, the fact that you guys really put this out there. We feel that our, our three legs of our stool, which are healthy, efficient, and local, really align well with the town of Superior and your goals and your mission. So it's really where we think that our niche buyer exists. Don't want to go through our countless awards again, but I'd be remiss in not mentioning what is new since we last saw you back in November for the concept review hearing. Just a few, you know, and we're not done yet with 2019, but these are the ones that we've received so far. And then I realized that I've talked a lot about third-party verification before. I won't go into too much detail about this, but just to kind of help you understand the data behind who we are, the actual, you know, the math, the science behind, so it's not just lip service. What, what an actual zero-energy-ready home is, and all the facets of it, with the healthy environment, comfort, efficient, quality construction, and durability are all important pieces of that puzzle. And then just to kind of give context, I know I've stood up here before and say that, said that other builders will claim to be energy-efficient. They're probably talking about being an Energy Star builder. And that's really just kind of a step up above the 2009 Energy Code. That's actually what has informed the Indoor Air Plus. And then, you know, various studies have evolved through the Department of Energy's Zero-Energy Ready Home Program, and that has actually evolved into the next step. And we've worked very closely with the U.S. Green Building Council to develop the latest and greatest version of LEED for homes. And so the good news is, all of our homes will be LEED certified, just by nature. It's just what we do. The existing homes that Stephen mentioned that we, well, the homes that are being built right now that were previously approved for Block 26, we don't have the results back yet, but the initial submittal looks like they should be LEED silver, or we're hoping for actually higher than that. So that kind of gives you some context there, just a good... So that kind of gives you some context there, just a good visual. And then I think this is important to bring up, you know, I mentioned that the math behind it, you know, the actual data. These are the number of zero-energy-ready homes that have been built in Colorado to date and I pulled this last week. But you can see we're, we're up there at the top and kind of pulling away. So I, with that said, I'll, you know, really get into the application. Steven always does a great job about providing context and I think that everybody kind of understands what we're talking about now. This is just some data, this was included in the application for the plat itself, it gives you an idea, you know, of the actual acreage, twenty-six lots on block fourteen, the eight outlots that Steven already discussed and really just kind of the main ones being the alley and that main open space. And then this is block fifteen, twenty-eight lots on this one, again, eight outlots and really, again, very similar configuration. We deliberately tried to make this kind of symmetrical in nature with our site planning. This is the site data table, I included it in there for reference, again, included in the application. But it really, very specifically and in a detailed nature, lays out what we're proposing with this final development plan, which corresponds with the, the plats for block fourteen and fifteen. Parking, I want to make sure that we, we showed this, you know, it's, it's an important aspect, an element of any new community, but specifically one that's, that's urban as this one is. This represents both block fourteen on the top and block fifteen on the bottom. You can see that we are meeting our parking requirements for these two blocks and the PD. This is just kind of a graphic representation that shows the actual, you know, the garage spaces are kind of highlighted in the, in the orange rectangular shapes. And it's difficult to see, but the off-street parking spaces are provided three per block, per the, per the PD amendment. And then also the on-street parking, only taking into account the on-street parking approved for the immediately adjacent curb. This, Steven went over this, this is just kind of the circulation pattern that shows, you know, how vehicular circulation will occur in and around the site. And then this just kind of breaks down the actual utilities. I think that it's helpful to represent how these wet and dry utilities lay out on the site. The dark blue is going to be the water, the light blue is the storm, the sort of lighter orange is the sanitary sewer. And then that red line is the electrical feeder line that Steven mentioned before. That's kind of that high voltage power line that's buried, which requires that eight-foot easement, which we have to step back from along Village Green Way. So we are currently coordinating with, with XL on the actual layout of the dry utilities. It becomes a little bit more complicated because of that electrical feeder line, usually we would basically encircle the sites with our electrical lines, but we just want to make sure that we're honoring the existing line and able to kind of coordinate with them and meet all their requirements. So actively working on that and made very, very good progress. Meter banks will be gas on one side and electric on the other side of the building. And the architecture has been designed for both product types to accommodate for those sort of utility penetrations towards the rear of the home on the side, so. Tried to think of everything. This is the block fourteen outlots, highlighted in green, gives you an idea of how they are oriented. These are just the landscaped outlots, the other one that is, is shown kind of highlighted here is the actual circulation. And it's the alley outlaw. And then this is block fifteen, landscape plan, again, eight outlots, it says twenty-eight residential units, very similar in configuration. And so here's the site plan, this is the site plan that we worked very hard on, we're very proud of. We think that it, well, not only does it meet all the design guidelines, it also takes full advantage of not just the geometry of these blocks, but also the surrounding context. And I'll get into the architectural design and how we've kind of transitioned into the community, both with design and building height here in a moment. But really those, those central greens were really intentionally done and designed in order to kind of be an extension of that Village Green Park. And, you know, we originally looked at just fronting out on all sides of the block and facing outward everywhere. And we did, we conducted some site evaluations, we, we did, we ran multiple scenarios of this configuration. And really in the end, you know, we went out and did some site visits and there have been areas where this has been, you know, the actual sort of quote unquote leftover space, if you pull everything out to the street, just evaluated that and I believe I spoke to that a little bit during the, during the concept review hearing. And it ends up being kind of leftover space, just like I said, it's underutilized, nobody ever really parks back there and it's just kind of you're turning your back towards it. So we elected to actually embrace the park, turn that kind of into a, you know, a community amenity that everybody can use, but it just really kind of feels and lives like an extended front yard and an extension of that park. And we feel that we've successfully replicated that on both sides of the park to really kind of play off of this symmetry of the blocks themselves. Steven mentioned that block fourteen is slightly larger, so it allows us to use a deeper floor plan. I think that that was smart planning to begin with because you wanted a lower building profile and so you can kind of extend the building depth a little bit more. And then as you transition into the more dense urban core, you have a smaller block that allows for a taller height and then you can kind of, you know, basically bring that massing vertical. So just a more zoomed in version of, of that site plan, it's the color rendering that we've produced for this application. This one's good because it does show for context, block twenty-six and the, the exact same product type that we are currently proposing for block fourteen as we sort of transition down the hill and then into the taller height requirement and overall urban core. So I've kind of addressed most of this already, but we really have tried very hard to work on the interconnected streets and pedestrian scale blocks. These are all elements that we've drawn from the actual design guidelines themselves. Enhanced crossings for, you know, specifically located community access, both of the park and surrounding amenities. And then patterns that will really just encourage the health of our residents. Again, I mentioned that, you know, the Town of Superior and Downtown Superior in particular are both directly aligned with who we want our residents to be. And that's healthy inside the home and also active outside the home. So this kind of orients you for where these two blocks are located. I love this exhibit, my marketing department loves this exhibit because it, it just shows the very thoughtful layout of all the different bikeways, multi-use paths and how it really interconnects to the region. So again, kudos. So this is example images that were really kind of inspirational for our block fourteen. The upper right image is, is a product type that we've done before that we've actually, this is the next evolution of that product type. But when I was listing the awards that we've won just this year, that was one of them there. So we're hoping that this, this newer and improved version of that same product type will actually win new awards moving forward. But also it gives you an idea of the, the characteristics just below that on the left-hand side of the screen of how these homes will live towards the, the sort of green, open lawn. And then I believe on the next slide, I actually have a picture here there, sort of center left of the screen, of an example of how we've done this before. Again, that's that same product type that we've improved upon and evolved. And these are some examples of the interior open spaces. Now, we've also updated the floor plans, but it does give you an idea for how these homes live. The architecture, Steven already kind of covered all of this, I think he did a great job, but this is just the color elevations that were submitted as part of the packet. I have the, the color of material boards here, just because the screen doesn't always really truly do it justice, especially the projector, so. If anybody would like to see those a little bit closer, I'd be happy to bring them up to the, to the board. And then just as far as the product mix, I think we've really kind of covered this already, ties in directly with what was already approved. And the building height, as we know, it was, you know, very important that we meet that requirement. We are compliant with that requirement and meet the Town Code. And this is just kind of that typical section that we show and it orients you for where these homes sit within that section. Okay, so this is kind of the floor plan. Steven asked that I include this, just for reference, so that people could kind of understand what we're looking at and how these homes actually function. This is the main floor that we're looking at at the center of the screen. Two-car garage, you enter in off the garage into the kitchen, dining room and living area, so it's a real open floor plan, that's very intentional in nature. And then it also opens up very well, you have these clear, unobstructed, you know, views to the front porch and out into the community as a whole. And then you have stairs that go both up to the second floor and down to the basement. We offer an unfinished basement that you can option up to improve and have a finished basement. Upstairs, we're showing the master bedroom with master bath, it lays out really, really well. We're currently in frame for our first building that's out there, be more than happy to give anyone a hard hat tour that would like one. But we're very, very excited about this, I mean, this was an awesome product to begin with and we've just improved upon it. And then the second bedroom would be oriented here kind of towards the front of the home. Dual vanity and a loft there. And then again, the unfinished basement, I have a more colored and gussied up option or rendering that's represented a little bit later. This shows how the buildings kind of fit together, another exhibit that was requested by staff, shows the roof plan, which we coordinated with a third-party provider to create a solar photovoltaic diagram and plan that tells us exactly how much solar we're going to generate. And then these are kind of the actual marketing images for the product type that's out there being sold in the community right now. So more three-dimensional, kind of looking down on the side of it, but it gives you an idea again for how they would kind of live. We're showing the optional basement with rec room on this first image. And then this one shows the two different options with the, you know, different floor plan configuration and how the stairs layout. You can either do the, the rec room on the bottom floor or the bedroom on that basement floor too. This is an image that's kind of looking due north, the, again, these homes are kind of on a cant. So it gives you an idea and it does do a good, good job of providing context for block fifteen beyond it. Shows how we've really potentially kind of lived towards the suite. But with this three-dimensionality, it gives us a real true good idea of how that's going to feel, right? And not as cool as what Chase does, but still, we really kind of appreciate the opportunity to really get a good understanding of the massing. Block fifteen, so you've seen block, you know, the architecture that we're proposing for block fourteen. Block fifteen, we're really excited about. As you may recall, back in November, we came before you and presented three different options for architectural style and it was pretty much resounding that you'd like to see a transitional style architecture. So that's what we went with on this project or for this particular block. But the fact of the matter is, is that we've been working on this architecture, this is one of the initial unit types that we're proposing. And we first started working on this back in December of twenty sixteen. So it's been a long road, but we're, we're very excited, like I said. It's been a very successful and collaborative process with, you know, the staff, the, the master developer in Metro District, but also Planning Commission and, and the Town Board as well. So we've seen these color images. Again, that transitional style architecture is very intentional, it borrows from the more traditional style architecture of the two-story. And it was wonderful feedback that we received. We were actually proposing initially as our first option, a more contemporary style architecture with monosloped roofs, modern style. But this serves as sort of a transition from the, you know, the, the more typical architecture that we have in modern farmhouse architecture on block fourteen into the more contemporary core. So elements like these, these sloped roofs on the, on the side elevation of the three-plex, that really kind of tie in and even the window placement, the application of materials. And then, you know, the, the special attention that's been paid to the transition between units, but also focused on the entry of those units themselves. The materials and colors, again, as Steven indicated, we were asked to kind of introduce new colors as part of the, the transition, but we did focus on having that sort of unifying white color and massing to tie all the units together. Here's another product type showing a representation of how the, the building would actually step between units or grade would require. And again, so these are all three-story townhomes. As Steven mentioned, they're forty-two foot tall, maximum height limit for this block is fifty-five feet. This is based on the previous board feedback. And it will tie in to both blocks fourteen and twenty-six. It's been a really wonderful exercise to work with two different architectural firms on this, so that they can kind of throw their creative juices at the different product types, but also work collaboratively on kind of how to tie them together. We talked about how it is in compliance with the actual building height as outlined in the PDA amendment. And this one is just, if it will animate, show kind of how we are just kind of coming down the hill. And it does do a good job of representing how it is essentially the same height moving across the plane because of the existing topography. So these are the new floor plans. I will preface this by saying that these are preliminary in nature, but they are, you know, the conceptual feel gives you an idea for how on the, the first floor over on the right, we're starting with the most narrow unit, which is sixteen point five feet wide, it's an oversized one and a half car garage. You have room for a visitable powder on that first floor that can be optioned into storage. And then your entryway up, main entry, this is where your visitors come in, it's an ample, very usable front porch. It's kind of that good, it serves as a delineation between sort of the public to private transition. And then on the main floor, we intentionally, I mean, we've, we've done this product type before, again, this is the next evolution of that. But we really have worked hard to integrate this open floor plan so that it really lives bigger than it, than it looks, than it should. High ceilings gives you an opportunity to really get these tall windows that allow a lot of natural light in, these side entrances, really kind of open it up and provide for some large windows there at the front. And then on the, on the third floor, we're very excited about this, this, this floor plan because it actually offers a dual vanity in the master, which is very exciting. And then a completely separate suite, which, so these would all be two bedrooms, but you have your own designated bathroom up there. This is the wider unit plan, essentially the same parts and pieces. These again would be a maximum of two bedrooms and this kind of shows you that it's just, you're just working with a little bit more real estate, so to speak, on the interior of the home, allows you to sort of rotate some of those elements up on the third floor. But essentially, just, excuse me, bigger version of the sixteen and a half foot wide unit. And this is the, excuse me, the, the twenty-two foot wide unit. You see that you have a little bit more room to play, so there's actually an island on the main floor. The, the actual powder has been shifted to the rear on this floor plan. But again, we have that side entry and those very large windows on the front. Really just opens it up for the actual, you know, the, the natural light to enter into the unit. This is the only third story floor plan that would offer for an optional third bedroom. There are fourteen of these unit types and it's important to mention that we accommodated for every single one of those fourteen to option up to that third bedroom and we still meet the parking requirements. Our historical data shows that most people just go with a two-bedroom in a loft and it's really only about thirty percent of people that actually select that third bedroom. But again, we wanted to plan for, for worst-case scenario and make sure that we had a, a fully approvable product, so. This is again to replicate what we showed for the two-story, just kind of how the buildings fit together. It gives some context of how, you know, the units actually coordinate with one another and then again, the roof plan there on the bottom. Don't have any color renderings of that floor plan yet, just because it is very initial in, in its design phase. But this is a view of this three-story product from the park. Chase did a really good job of kind of providing this context, just, you know, as you flew through the model. But this gives you some color and material application and kind of gives you an idea how it would look. And then this is looking back down, you can see the arrow up in the upper left-hand corner to orient you, you're kind of looking back down Central Park. And that's just more zoomed in image of that. So with that, I'll close my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any potential questions. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, want to start with questions for developer, Horsdon?
Could you talk a little bit more about the solar roofs?
Could you talk a little bit more about the solar roofs?
Yes. So let me pull up the site plan because I think that will kind of help orient everyone. I showed the roof plans and it's important that you sort of understand that, but the site plan itself will show you how we've deliberately analyzed. I mean, we've run this through solar models to show where we can maximize the solar exposure. And we're not going to necessarily put a number of panels on the north side just because that solar orientation doesn't maximize the productivity. But we will try and put solar on every usable space that's allowable by code for these unit types.
Are they going to be solar panels of the kind that exist now or are they solar tiles?
Yes, good question. We actually have looked at the solar tiles before and we've worked with companies like Tesla in order to try and prototype that technology. It's just, in all honesty, not ready for primetime. And we had, you know, some, well, I don't want to throw anybody under the bus, but we didn't really have a good experience with that. We're always ready for the next best thing. We would be ready to pre-wire for that type of technology. But for now, we're just going to go with the tried and true technology that we do know and our trusted partners installing.
The situation at the moment is you're still looking for a contractor to supply them?
Right, so the way that we typically do it, we work with Sun Street, and we have worked with SolarCity in the past, and that was how we got our connection with Tesla. But yeah, Sun Street has been our third-party provider, and that's who envision using here. That's who we're using on block twenty-six, and that's our plan.
So it's not, I mean, in your narrative, it said everybody's getting them, it's not an option?
Right, that is correct.
Questions?
Couple of questions, I don't know, maybe it's kind of staff and applicant questions. My first one is just related to, I think you're labeling it pedestrian connection, so kind of baby analysis or rationale of a possible mid-block crossing there. So, and if that's a safe place, right? Like if you're queuing everybody there, then you either should give some additional queues, I think, to drivers that people are crossing there. Or if you don't want them to cross there, then I think you need to do queuing through like shrubbery in that right-of-way or, you know. It's not going to be a high-volume street, it's not going to be a high-speed street. So I think it's not, you know, we're not perpetuating, you know, extremely unsafe situation, but just something to consider as far as treating that goes. And then the, go ahead, you look like you want to do it.
And real quick to add to that, is there parking on Promenade, on both sides of Promenade?
Just the one side?
There's a bike lane on one side and parking on the other, from what I recall.
Parking on the Village Green Park side?
Yeah.
Okay. So there's actually, we can show it in our calculation because it's not directly adjacent. There's a bike lane in front of ours, but there is parking along the park.
Yeah, and Bill Janks, our Superior, and thank you for taking the time, first of all. Just to respond to that question real quickly, I would encourage people to go down to the corners where crossing is intended. It is, like you said, it's probably not an incredibly high-volume street, and the roads around Village Green are all one-way. So you're not at least dealing with two-way traffic, and that's quite a bit dangerous than just one-way, you know where the cars are coming from. So, you know, I think we should take a closer look, and I'll make a note of it, to look at the landscaping and the right-of-way in front of that area. I totally agree with you, we should make queues with bushes. At the end of the day, we all know there will be people that cross the road in the middle.
Yeah, and then if they want to cross the road, right? Like do you, like, is there, you know, is there anything we need to do to just queue drivers? Like this is a, you know, a pet connection, even just a panic. I mean, I don't know if it-
I don't think it was intended to be a pet connection. I think the pet connection's just labeled as internal to the blocks. But yeah, it's not that big of a block to justify a mid-block crossing. I mean, you only have, you know, a hundred feet to go to get to that corner.
Well, then you're impacting the bike lane if you did bump outs and things, so just from a queue thing, I think you could treat it through some queues to send people to the corners.
That's a good comment.
My only other comment was related to fire apparatus and a twenty-foot-
So that's a good question.
-drive lanes in the middle?
There's, I don't have a pointer anymore, but the, kind of the H in each of the mid-bar for the H in each of the blocks is twenty-six feet. That part right there, everything else is twenty feet. So the fire district needs twenty feet when they only have to fight one side. They need wider if they have to fight both sides. So we did work with Rocky Mountain Fire and they needed for that kind of bar in the middle of the H in both blocks, but they only need the twenty everywhere else. And all the movements work, and they actually ran it forward and backwards, so going against traffic as well as going with-
So they're confident?
They're good, yeah.
Could you go to front facade of block fifteen for the three-story, so we can look Yeah, that's probably fine. So I love the look of this. My concern would be like on the gables funneling to that centerpiece when it's, you know, snow, heavy snow, that it's all funneling to be right above your front entry door. You do have a roof over the door, but the amount of snow that could be collected on there and dropping down onto the small roof there above the door and then collecting on the sidewalk right in front, do you have anything to address that as?
That's a very good question. I might ask to bring my architect up for that product type. I know that we do have a very deliberate system of roof drainage and downspout systems, but Paul, could you speak to that specifically?
Paul Brady, Gunsick Architects. You are correct that all those entry doors do have a low roof over it. Those low roofs generally provide two or three feet of cover, so if there is anything falling, it would protect you at the immediate door. At the top surface, the roofing product, the asphalt product isn't slick, it holds that snow on. And then especially with the super-tight envelope that Thrive builds with, there's no heat loss up through that roof, and so the snow stays up there instead of sloughing off. You know, like in the mountains, you design without gutters because that snow's coming off. Here purposely, it's going to be up there. So A, you're protected, B, it's going to stay up there.
Okay, so the lower roof over the door, is it angled straight down towards the sidewalk or it's hard to tell from?
Its high point is the back wall. Its low point is front, and it's flat, parallel to the street. So it does shed, if snow's on there, onto the sidewalk, but it's a smaller surface.
Okay.
And there's a gutter there as well.
All right. On the body color choices, who, how does that get determined for the different blocks?
So we have a color consultant?
You shown the color scheme, like on, that's one thing I didn't get into, and you saw it, or it's on one of your slides, or we can pull up ours, but it's, there you go. So it's already predetermined to have that variety in that bottom left-hand corner, is that answering your question? So if you zoom in there, like he's got scheme one and-
Oh, okay.
But yeah, it's clarified through the FDP, and they've provided that variety to ensure that they don't occur right next to one another.
Thank you, I didn't understand your question, but thank you.
That it? Question, Stuart?
I just have one question, and it's more for clarification than- One question that's more for clarification than anything else. It mentions that there are pedestrian-scaled lighting and poles throughout this project, and what does that mean?
Good question. So first of all, there are building-mounted fixtures that are intended to really offer illumination both on the alley side. So those would be on a photocell so that they turn on automatically at night, and they're centrally located over each individual garage door. So that offers for, you know, sort of vehicular scale lighting. But then on the front, every unit comes equipped with its own, and that one is manually operated, but that would be more, you know, the typical fixture that's at your front porch that illuminates your address. And then in the actual application, I did not include that in the presentation, I apologize, but the photometric plan.
So I think the term pedestrian probably came from my staff memo, and we could have said something like neighborhood scale or something, but it's intended to not be like the full twenty-five or thirty-foot height, you know, Cobra lights that you see out there. So any application that occurs within downtown Superior has that Ashbury fixture that you see on Main Street already. So these are, I believe, twelve feet tall, but they'll provide the same, I mean, so they usually have to use more of them to provide that amount of light, but it gives you more of a, the scale as you're walking through that feels better as a pedestrian than it would if it was really tall and overwhelming, and it's also better for the actual units. You don't have light kind of shining in windows. They're at a lower scale, it's probably going to hit somewhere between the first and second floors, so.
Yeah, that's a very good point.
Yeah, the thing of that does address my question.
There they are.
They're the same fixture type at the top of the pole, but just as Stephen mentioned, instead of being twenty-five feet tall, they're on the left-hand side of the screen. It's a twelve-foot dimension, so the same amount of light, it's just more pedestrian-scale height. And then these bollards here are approximately thirty inches in height, so they're more just pathway lights, and that-
We need you to get up to the microphone, we can't hear you on the recording, but thanks.
The smaller fixture just to the right of the larger is more of what's like a pedestrian sort of bollard light, and it's really oriented around the pathways to illuminate at night. And those are thirty inches in height.
And these will be clustered to provide security throughout the community?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that is the idea, eyes on the streets and, yes.
All right, anything else?
Yes, all right. In one of the narratives, it talks about private concrete lanes. Could you explain what those are and how they work a little?
Yeah, so the alleys themselves are technically outlots, so they are owned and maintained by the Metro District, and each individual resident pays into that Metro District in order to maintain those. So that's what that's referring to.
Will that include snow clearance and things like that?
Yes, yes.
And perhaps you could say, I mean, I think I noticed that the snow clearance was going to go into the interior lanes?
Correct.
Can you show roughly where that would be?
Bring up that, how do I switch that? Well, actually, I'm going to be in here, I can use this. So let me show you the landscape plan. The landscape plan was designed to have these really hardy materials at the ends of those snow storage alleyways. So it allows for snow storage to occur here at the end very intentionally, and we've done this before. It's calculated not just from our landscape material, but the actual volume from a civil engineering perspective. So that's what that is intended to serve as.
I mean, would the whole of the H be cleared into those areas?
So, yeah, I'd like to go back to the Village Green Park and the parking along the park. Going across, directly across from the two outlots, would it, are there parking spots there right across from the outlot? So it almost, for me, if I was a resident on the inside and I've got, and I'm looking down that outlot, you know, having it open up all the way to that Village Green Park without having cars to block that view or just kind of create that buffer, I think that just really opens up from one green space all the way through the park and then to the other one, and it kind of creates more of a community. Whereas if you've got two cars parked there on each side, then it just kind of creates, then all of a sudden the park just seems to be enclosed. At that point, you kind of lose that really open feeling. Just wondering if there's a way, because I know that you have provided more than enough parking, I think it was block fifteen, that maybe do a bump out to eliminate those two parking spots, just to kind of keep that open openness for the park.
So I guess I just, no, it's a good, it's a good point, and visibility is something we, I hadn't considered through the review. I guess I'd clarify that these two FDPs are limited to the interior of the block, the FDPs for the streets have already been done. And I'm thinking harder about it. I think there's bull bouts on both sides, so I think that there's on-street parking on both sides of Promenade, if I'm remembering correctly, as well as a bike lane. And then one lane of travel in each direction, that's what I recall it being. But I guess to give you some assurance, if that's, you know, a desire that we want to explore, it's our street, we could certainly look to limit parking in front of those areas in order to encourage, you know, that visibility, if that's a strong desire or recommendation Planning Commission wants to make, so.
Any other comments or questions for the applicant or staff?
Just one other thing. I think that, I want to applaud you for addressing the ADA issues that we're having and that we've seen previously in this project because of some of the topography and some of the grading. And my question is, with the grading and with the different entry points, is the units, the type B units that you're suggesting, are going to be sufficient for people who are and who require accessibility? If that makes sense?
It does, yes. And it's, it's an interesting statute in our Colorado law. It was written, and we worked very closely with our previous application on block twenty-six with the people that actually wrote the law, to get a full understanding of what the intentions were for it. And that was a collaborative effort in and of itself, but really, there was sort of a loophole with attached housing where there wasn't visitability being provided for those units. And essentially, there's a whole scale, there's certain thresholds of points that you must achieve, but there's different unit types that you can utilize in order to achieve those points. The type B unit, literally all they asked for, and he repeated this over and over again, was that he just wanted to be able to come and visit you and go to the bathroom and leave. And so it's literally just a unit that has a zero-step entry into the front of the home, and then a visitable first-floor restroom that accommodates for the turning radii necessary for a wheelchair or somebody with a other disability. So to address your question specifically, both blocks require twelve points. Both blocks are achieving that requirement with twelve individual type B one-point units with a visitable first floor.
And you're able to accomplish that even though there may be some issues and challenges with grading and things like that?
Yes, yes. My civil engineer has definitely earned his paycheck with that one, because there is some grading gymnastics that need to occur. Drainage is also, you know, probably the prime concern with any site of this nature, but we have successfully achieved it. Thank you.
At all? Okay, thank you, appreciate it. Any questions for staff before I open up public comment? Steven? No. Okay, so if there's anybody in the audience who has, wants to comment on this application, now would be the time to do that. Don't see anyone? All right. If there's nothing else, I'll close the public hearing and we can discuss. That means no more questions for staff, the developer, right? All good? Okay, all right. Public hearing's closed. No entertained discussion or a motion or both?
I just want to go on record saying I support the project. I appreciate that you heard our feedback at the concept plan review. I think, you know, at this point, we're starting to have a really good feel of kind of what these residential areas, you know, are being constructed as, and I think that's also good for us to understand kind of the impacts of some of those, you know, more dense neighborhoods and the things to consider. So I don't have any concerns with the application as submitted. Just a few comments to kind of look at regarding queuing for pedestrians around the area, but I think it's great.
I'll echo those comments, I like the development, looks good. Anybody else? Everybody else?
I thought the, I mean, I thought you changed the back of, the rear elevation on the two-story buildings to make those more attractive. I thought the rear elevation on the three-story building was actually a little monotone. I don't know whether that was just a function of the slide or whether if you looked at it in three dimensions, there'd be different depths to it or not.
They can't respond now, though.
Okay, sorry, yeah. Otherwise, I thought it looked very, otherwise, I thought it looked like a very attractive design.
Any clarified points? So Stephen, is everything that, you've mentioned a couple of points related to setbacks, is that covered in the resolution just related to our general statement about staff direction?
Do you need to cover the exceptions in the resolution or are they addressed?
No, I mean, the resolution itself references the portion of the code that would give you authority to approve with the exceptions, so.
Yeah, I mean, it reads, yeah, technical or exceptions related. Does that cover it? Or, yeah, okay, all right. Anybody want to take a shot at this?
I'll put a note in my summary. I mean, if you guys have anything or want to directly say that you're supportive of the setbacks, it'd probably be good to include in the summary that goes to the board.
Okay. Anybody have any issues with setback changes? I don't, I think they're fine. Okay, you can include those in your notes. I think we're all in support of that, that's fine.
I think you won't build anything over a high-power line, do you?
Sure, I'll take a shot at it.
What's that?
I'll take a shot at it.
Go for it.
All right. Am I on?
Before we, were there any, sorry to interrupt, but there were a couple of things related to pedestrian crossings. Do you want to include any of that in there or just ask Stephen to maybe bring it up in his summary with?
Oh, I got it down in my notes in terms of summarizing what you guys discussed, so.
Okay, that sounds good.
But if you want anything direct or visibility?
I didn't hear anything.
Yeah, I don't think we need a condition. I think, you know, if anything, it's an off-site in the right-of-way, in the tree lawn area.
Okay, all right, go for it.
Okay, so Town and Superior Planning Commission, Resolution Number PC-2, Series 2019. The resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior recommending approval of two major final subdivision plat and final development plan for Lot One, Block Fourteen, and Lot One, Block Fifteen of the Superior Town Center. And there's case number FF219, Twenty-Nineteen dash O Two, FP Twenty-Nineteen dash O Three, and FDP Twenty-Nineteen dash Zero One.
All right, I have a motion by Commissioner Stewart, do I have a second?
I'll second.
All right, second by Commissioner Reese, all in favor?
All right.
And it's unanimous. Cool, thank you.
I'll hang on to your interior boards for the next meeting. Yeah, so you don't have to haul them around. Good, congratulations, you've accomplished weekend. Enjoy your honeymoon.
The opinion occurs to me, we don't have any bus stops anywhere. What's the point of asking for a pass?
All right, so we're still on, so we're still in the middle of our meeting. We haven't ended that yet, so we keep chatting, but. Let's see, so we're at basically staff announcements miscellaneous and whether we want to discuss anything regarding the Northwest Superior or the ADUs or any of that, but.
Staff announcements, I think we'll have another application to you next month. We're shooting for August twentieth. I think that's all I got on my, that's my immediate radar, but I have a lot, a lot of other things. We'll have probably another one in the fall, too, so.
For now, my schedule's not free on the twentieth.
On the twentieth, okay. I got an anniversary that day, too, but I said I got an anniversary that day, too. But it's better than the sixth, so I'd rather have more time.
Any word from Tesla, any changes or requests for permits or more special?
My understanding is they're supposed to come in with a permit?
Request.
Either at the end of the month or sometime in August, so they're trying to finish.
Any permits pulled on the building lots in Superior in Old Town? Yep, there's, I know several lots are sold over there, but that's the individual ones, not the Rogers Farm.
Well, no, the, so there is one on, in, on Second, just north of, just south of Heather Craig Craft's place, Charles Hacker is building a house on one of his two lots.
Okay, that's not even one of the new ones.
But then on Third, my understanding is, you know, I don't know, five or six of them are sold.
Yeah, that's what it said when I walked by.
About how that will look and.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you. So we're going to have that access to the one that's kind of off.
Yeah, how's that, do they, have they even proposed access to that yet or?
No, they had to plat it to provide access. So they had to plat like a flagship lot in order to recreate the access that they vacated, because when they vacated that lot or that easement or whatever, I guess it was an alley or street, it was owned in common. So the property owner, whoever had con- contingency with Third Avenue also owned the lot behind them, and then they didn't have that anymore, so they didn't really have access, so they had to reestablish it, so. But that was all done through their replat, which kind of shifted some lot lines to the south and made some of those lots wider, because they had sixty feet of right-of-way that they vacated, so they distributed that right-of-way throughout without creating an additional lot. So it was all able to be done administratively.
Okay.
Took a while, but it was all administrative.
Yes.
Are there any thoughts about the future of the old Land Row lot?
Not for me. I haven't, yeah, I haven't been involved in that, so. I think the board's been discussing it, but I don't, yeah, I haven't been part of it.
When do we close on the property?
I think next month, so.
Do we want to schedule a work session to maybe just see if, at least maybe you can pull the commission to see who's available for a meeting soon, just to talk more about accessory dwelling?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to have a development application, so we can meet, I think it's August sixth, if I'm remembering my calendar correctly.
What's the availability here on August sixth? At least what I've got, I'd like to get a good group here, so we can try to make some progress on this. And while you're looking, one thing, you know, there were a lot, there was a lot of discussion at the last meeting, but as I sort of reflected on, on our discussions, our work plan was approved, the town board is interested, and there seemed to be full support in us reviewing and looking at ADUs, so that regardless of whether we think it's worth the effort or not worth the effort, or a lot of work or not a lot of work, whether there's some other ideas, the things we can do, we, I think we have a responsibility to wade into that for a little ways. I think other things that may come out can, you know, we can, we can bring those up and share those with the board, and I can request direction as to whether they want us to consider things like subdividing existing lots or just making the whole thing multifamily all the way across, as you mentioned.
There was a lot discussed at the last meeting, yeah.
But those are, those are a little bit, you know, that's different than, than what we would discuss on our work plan, so I think it's important for us to move through what they requested us to look through on our work plans.
So, I mean, I think one of the, and I'm not bringing this up with any agenda, so, but one of the things you guys mentioned was staff, and I guess one of the things that I feel guilty about is not being able to help you more, but that's partly because I'm pretty busy with the development review application. So if that's something, just because this is the budget season, if that's something that you guys want to recommend or you feel is important, then that probably needs to get in a recommendation soon.
To get some, to get you some assistance to help us work through our, get through our work plan.
It's something you guys mentioned, if it's, if you feel like I'm alone not fulfilling, you know, like your needs in order to do this stuff, then that's probably where we would need to go, but if you're happy where you're at?
Can you give me some guidance on what?
I'll be happy either way. You're either happy with me or you're going to give me support.
Well, yeah, I mean, yeah, so is it support for you, is that, is that what, what would that look like for just?
A recommendation for, I mean, it would probably give more help for, you know, I think you could have more flexibility in assigning, you know, staff to do some of the stuff that we've relied on.
I think that's the board's desire, too.
And then not have so much fall on like work sessions, which can be tricky to get, you know, I mean, I think it's just in the meantime consuming, as we've seen. But.
So would that be like an assistant for you or?
Yeah, it would be like a planning tech or a planner one or something like that, probably. Yeah, so I mean, I think they would help Planning Commission, but then they would also fill, you know, in on some of the smaller applications that come in, over-the-counter customer service, that type of stuff.
So Stephen, would you like to start over and say that you do have an agenda?
No, no, no.
We, I actually think I brought that up at one point in one of the meetings, in one of our work sessions, that we might need to get you some help, too.
No, it was brought up and it was brought up to me by other staff, as to whether or not I followed up on it, and I hadn't, so I'm following up on it.
And what would that look like, just a request for the board or just a request to get it into the budget?
I think it's a recommendation that you make, or I don't know how you'd make it, but whether or not you want to make a formal recommendation to the board. I can talk to Martin about how that would look, so.
Okay.
When do we have to do that, if we have to get it into the budget? Because we're not going to, if we don't meet until the twentieth of August, is that too late?
I think if you guys want to make a recommendation on it now, we would, I mean, the sooner the better. Budget doesn't usually get finalized until, what, November or something like that, but they're working through those things now, so.
What would that look like cost-wise? We talking a hundred grand, fifty grand, two hundred grand? What are we, what are we talking about?
I don't know, it's a good question. I haven't done any research on it, because I haven't, yeah, it hasn't been on my radar, because I have no agenda. Yeah, let me tell you, it's going to cost exactly. Now, I don't know, somewhere probably between fifty and.
Yeah, I'm guessing fifty's a bit low and two hundred's probably high, so.
It's tricky when you figure like with the benefits and all the other stuff that comes in with that, too, right?
Right, but it's a, yeah, I'm guessing it's a fifty-five, sixty-five, seventy-five grand a year person, somewhere in that range. What's that?
You could be an auctioneer, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I definitely think as a planning commission, we want to recommend to the board that planning staff, you know, be supplemented with additional help that's dedicated to planning, that doesn't get monopolized by all the other things, too, I think, from the community development.
Stephen gets to do what he wants to do, though.
Correct. Thank you. Add that in there.
Because I think we'd like to have Stephen working consultant.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're still our, you're still our planner, and then you can have, yeah.
He can have help.
You get help and we can, yeah.
And would it be a consultant or would it be somebody that would be hired in or?
I think it would be like recommendation for staff or, I mean, you could do either one, but I think that there wasn't.
Yeah, I think the.
Consultant route, I don't know.
Yeah, that was.
No, I think for the purposes of kind of meeting the work, work plan that the board would like us to do, as well as just the day-to-day workload that is coming through the planning department, additional staff is warranted.
Yeah, just paying attention to other things that are being impacted by downtown Superior, just making sure we're planning outside of that area for, not just Northwest Superior, really everywhere, just would be good.
There's a lot on the backend, too, that is tricky, you know, in terms of inspections and just reviews it up, like the only permits that come in, you know, to make sure they match what we approved on, you know, we spend so much time working on, on the front end, so.
Would we want to, would that, do we want to make a recommendation tonight? I mean, we can, we can finalize the numbers later and maybe get a little direction from Martin, would that be?
I don't know, that we need to weigh in, or we just want to say we support additional staff for the planning department?
Okay.
Well, I mean, it should be a recommendation. I mean, I just want to, even if it's a straw poll, I don't know, we have to do a motion in the vote, but if we could just hit a straw poll.
How formal does that need to be?
Right, and maybe, Dan, maybe you can help us with that.
I think if it's some kind of action or recommendation, you would need to do it by motion.
Okay.
You know, you can make some kind of recommend, you could make a motion with that, with that recommendation and then put it to the board. I think that's the best way.
Okay, and so even if we have some open questions about amounts and that, that can be, that's fine.
Yeah, yeah.
We can leave it, we can leave that vague to be, to be determined by?
Right.
By staff?
Right, I'm thinking you could probably just do a general recommendation, and then, you know, more of the details, I think, could probably be worked out administratively.
Okay, so maybe we could do something, you know, like a recommendation to the town board to?
Do you think you have enough information to do that?
What's that?
Do you think you have enough information to do?
I think we all knew we needed it months ago, but.
Do you have concerns?
Do you have concerns about it?
I just, I obviously don't know.
Yeah.
I don't think I know enough about it, actually.
Well, I think our concern is, is that, I mean, Stephen's tied up with, just even dealing with existing applications in downtown, and his day-to-day workload isn't such that he can do a lot of work for us on our work plan items that we're, we're working through now related to Northwest Superior and, and those. So the idea was getting him some help so that we can continue that planning to take, when they, when we give him direction, he doesn't have much time to do anything, really, what the issue is.
Well, it's true, but the work plan items were fairly loose. I mean, if you ask, I'd have to go back, I should go back and look at them and say, okay, I mean, here's a concept, if you want to turn this concept into a practical plan of action, what's it actually going to take to do?
Well, we have two, two that are really pretty obvious and strong. One is ADUs, because that's a big, I mean, that's, that's going to take a lot of effort. The other is just the review of the land use code and cleaning up things, and that's been on our, we haven't really done that for a while. We haven't put any effort into looking at the code and cleaning some things up. I know there's some things in there that have me concerned. There's also some ordinances related to our land use code that I'd love to get another look at, but, you know.
It wasn't clear to me, just because I knew, basically, that the, how much of our work plan was supposed to be worked for us as opposed to how much of it was supposed to be worked by staff?
Most of the work is done by staff. I'd say there's some work, I mean, you know, we do some, I mean, I do some, I mean, obviously, I kind of went at that Northwest Superior thing at the beginning, but then once it's introduced, it kind of gets turned over to staff for, for work. We don't really have a lot of ability to, I mean, we can certainly assign people to go through chunks of land use code and bring up questions, but as far as getting it rewritten and, and addressed, that's a, it gets pretty, yeah, all this stuff is pretty technical. Right.
And we wouldn't feel particularly qualified to, to address.
Yeah, I mean, there are things up there we can bring out as concerns, and we've done that before. We did, it's been, when we do that full review, that was a while ago, when that.
Yeah, it was, we saw.
Was it fifteen, it was a little bit earlier? Maybe fourteen, yeah, yeah.
I mean, I guess how I see it is that we've come to these situations where you guys want, you know, some product produced, and it ends up having to be a consultant to do it. So if we have enough product that needs to be produced and, you know, we have to go through a process to get a consultant hired, we're not that efficient, so. It's, if that's your perspective on it, then I think, you know, planning, additional planning staff would be helpful. And, you know, I think that if you talk to our applicants, additional planning staff would be helpful. So I think it's, you know, it's not just planning commission, but, and then it is tricky to do, you know, the work plan is planning commissions.
Sure.
The work really needs to be collaborative, because it's a matter of, you know, somebody on staff kind of educating you guys, but the direction and the decisions are supposed to come from planning commission, not from, so it's tricky for me particularly, because it's just one of me. So if I were to produce, you know, recommendations on ADU, that's just one person's opinion and it's your project, you know, so like, I, my approach to that would be to give you a broad overview, and that's kind of what I tried to do last month, was, you know, what are ADUs, what are the typical considerations, but then, you know, how does it work for us needs to come from, and/or what, you know, kind of what other information do we need? What do you, I mean?
Yeah, that work product has to come from staff, right?
It's more of a back and forth, yeah, kind of, but it's a back and forth, and the direction really needs to come from planning commission.
Yeah.
So, as to what you guys want.
And isn't the other, the other part that I'm always amazed at, Stephen, is?
Do you have your mic on?
Oh, sorry. The other part that I'm amazed at is the volume that is, has come through that you're handling, and it seems like it's only getting to get busier. It doesn't seem like it's going to get less. So when I look at our requirements and we're going to task him to help us more, I think looking in the future, at least for the next couple of years, we're going to continue to build down here and require a lot, we're not going to require, but the town's going to require a lot of your time, so if we're trying to get your ti, your time.
Correct.
We probably need some more help.
Yeah.
So I'm for it.
Any other thoughts, Stephen? Is it something you guys are in support of, to put a recommendation together like that or?
I definitely support that, as long as we're very clear that there is no agenda here that we're trying to address. You know, I, I hear what you're saying, Stephen, I think that you certainly could use some help in your department and being able to. help in your department, and being able to continue to help us in the way that you have, if you're able to delegate some of those other duties and continue to provide what you're providing for us, I think that that's a win-win for us and our town, so I do support that.
Yeah, and I don't think the only agenda is our work plan, I mean, we have a work plan to work through, and that's going to, that's going to require research, and, I mean, you know, even the, the general statement in there of working of staff to, to continue to work with Bricksmore and look at Northwest Superior, I mean, that's not going to happen. I mean, if there's not staff time available, that's never going to happen, it's just going to sit and die. If, if we're instigating it, and we're reaching out, and, you know, we're talking to, to the state, and to Bricksmore, and to the tenants, and we make that, at least, keep it alive, then it's more likely that we'll be able to make progress in planning that area, so. And I, I think, I'm thinking the board would be more supportive of staff, you know, internal staff time being directed by, you know, our manager and assistant manager, than trying to bring in a consultant like we've done in the past, that just didn't go quite as well as we'd hoped. So if we set something, you know, like, recommendation to the, to, it would be to the town board, right? So it'd be a recommendation to town board to consider adding to the budget, number to be determined for an additional, or an so, what do you want to call them, associate planner, and so what do you, what'd you call it?
I mean, yeah, I mean, planning staff.
An additional, yeah, additional, additional planning staff to assist Stephen and the planning commission with our, with existing workload and ongoing, and, and the, and the planning commission's work plan, something to that effect. So I just turn that into a motion.
Great.
Is that audio? Can we get that, can we get that rewritten? Okay, well, there's the motion, so for that.
Okay.
So we do have a motion. Need a second.
Second.
A second, so go. Okay. Alright, so we have a second, any discussion, questions, right, all in favor? Alright. Are you unanimous, fellas, you two? Okay.
Which I think is a good segue into your next thing, which is, should we continue kind of doing work sessions? And as supportive as I am to meet our goals on our work, work plan, I'm also sensitive of everybody's time, and particularly Stephen's time, of preparation of these materials, and I feel like we're not getting anywhere.
Well, we've only had one meeting, but...
No, I feel like the ADU meeting, though, you know, we were going to do public con, or public outreach, and that would need a lot of staff time, and I don't know if that's realistic. I don't know that I need, my personal thought is, I don't know that I need to talk about ADUs until we know we've got capacity from staff to continue to, you know, develop research and provide public outreach. That's just my opinion.
Other thoughts?
ADUs in particular, we're not the only town looking at those, I think Boulder has got this, is going into ADUs in great depth. If they come up with anything useful, the first thing I do is steal it.
Well, Lafayette, there are other towns with, with, I mean, and I'm sure we could direct our, our legal staff to, to, to find that as well, right? I mean, I mean, that code is readily available from other communities, I'm presuming, right? I mean, that, that could be a starting place for us. I, I actually thought ADUs would be a little simpler, I mean, I, I know the overview was, it could get complex, but, I mean, my initial thinking was, let's start with something that's already out there.
So you think we just draft an ordinance and let people react to that?
Yeah, I don't think we draft it to the point where it's a resolution to pass, I think we, we draft it so that we can get comment and feedback, and, I mean, I, I'm in the opinion we had it support for ADUs, I mean, I could be wrong, but...
I could go down that road. I don't know.
Are you thinking of ADUs just for original town, or ADUs for everywhere in Superior?
You can't do everywhere, well, I mean, when you, when you do it for the town, it's in our code, and so it's therefore permissible throughout the town, right? But then, but the HOAs aren't going to, they, they, they don't allow, they're, they're...
You have to amend the PD for Rock Creek.
Oh, that's, well, yeah, then we have PDs, right, that we have to cover, even Sagamore, right, those, that's under PD, and Col Creek's under a PD, so, no, yeah, it would, it would be for anything that's not under a PD, which leaves original town, basically, right? And I think that's it.
And Commissioner Miller last time was kind of curious about it for his, you know, neighborhood, and so neighborhoods could, you know, once they recognize that it's allowed in original town, want to find out whether or not, or how, but then they would need to be kind of the instigators for their, you know, HOA, or their, you know...
Yeah, how would that work in Sagamore, where there is no HOA?
They would need to process, probably a PD, and then, you know, in order to allow it, so, and those would be, I mean, and that's kind of why, there's no one-size-fits-all, like Sagamore has very small, like parcels, so, you know, like, it may not be appropriate to have a detached ADU in Sagamore versus original town, where you have 7,000 square foot lots, so, you know, you know, we, like, if it's a concept holds, and, you know, the town's supportive of it, then, you know, having them as, you know, basement finishes or something like that, but the, you know, as we discussed last time, there's just complications in terms of costs associated with it, so that's where planning commission needs to, you know, provide more guidance as to, but, I mean, it may be an easier conversation to pull Lafayette's and figure out, you know, like, these are the elements they included, do you feel they're appropriate, and I could help identify whether or not they are, or where they may not be, and then as a code amendment process, that's going to be more detailed, like, we have to go through and, and remove things that would otherwise be contradictory.
Yeah.
You know, like our multifamily definition or something might need to be amended, and that type of stuff, so.
It's going to be staff-intensive, I guess I would look to staff. I fully support staff developing an ordinance to take to the public to react to, I don't know if there's capacity from either the legal side with the planning staff.
We give them the staff, though.
Yeah.
What's that? Yeah, 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 but then we're looking at probably January, right, till that, that process could start, so the, the question is, is, and I don't know how succinct, I guess, the ADU code would be, in Lafayette, for example, is it something, and Dan, you may know this, is it something that we can pull out, or is it so intergrained or intertwined into the code that it's too hard to pull out?
You know, to tell you the truth, I haven't taken a look at Lafayette, I would have to kind of look a little closer, but, you know, I, I think it's, it becomes more of a preference thing, you know, I'm assuming that, that, you know, there's towns that would integrate it kind of throughout, I know there's, there's other towns that have kind of like a separate, you know, code that, you know, incorporates those, those other type of features, but, yeah, I haven't, I haven't specifically looked at Lafayette, to tell you the truth.
Okay. And is that something we can, we, is that a request we make at the town board to, to ask our legal staff to look into that, or can we direct you to, through Stephen, to?
I can explore, you know, how much time we have to dedicate to it, or whatever.
To look into, and, and I would, I think Lafayette's a great place to at least start, to me, and I'd have to, you know, ask you to use your judgment as to stop if it doesn't make sense, but...
I think it's, is it realistic, though, to assume that you have any time at all, since we just made a resolution asking for more staff?
I mean, I, I could certainly pull what they have, I mean, that, you know, and then, you know, review it, and then it would most, it'd probably be, you know, I don't know that I have time to look at it in depth, summarize the code, but we could, you know, I could look at it, digest it, be able to explain it to you guys, and, and have a conversation about it in a work session.
I'd, I'd be up if you could even pull it and get it to us without even doing a major summary, I mean, that might be a place to start, right? That way, if it's, you know, if it's doable, you know, if we get in there and say it's just so intertwined with all their code, it's going to be impossible to, to...
Okay. No, I think that we could probably look at Lafayette, and, you know, like, just do a quick search for municipalities in Colorado that allow them, and, you know, Boulder might be one, I don't know what their lot sizes are, but we'd want to have something kind of comparable.
Yeah.